Good evening. Um, welcome to the city of New Orleans, City Council Regular Session Meeting for Monday, July seventeen, twenty twenty-three at seven o'clock. Please stand for the.
I believe in the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the middle of the delivery and justice for all.
Uh, what is your call? Thank you. Mary Vanahan, here, Council Fendel, there, Council Martinez.
Here.
Uh, Council Sheldon.
Present.
Council Pathan is on.
Here.
Oh, there she is. Her husband's jumping the car right now. Um, and uh, Council Page is excused this evening and Council Smith is also excused. Great. Thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. Um, item six is our consent agenda and tonight we are approving the July seventeenth City Council Regular Session Agenda. And also the June twenty, June twenty-third City Council Minutes. Are there any corrections or addition to the minutes we need to be aware of? All right, hearing none, our energy motion will move.
So it's good, good. The tenant Dennis presented.
Okay. All right, with the first by Council Fendel, second by Council Martinez, can you defer the discussion? Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed say nay? All right, with the carry, thank you. Item seven is a public comment and this is the time that we wish anyone online or in the hall wishing to speak on uh something that is not on the agenda. Um, at this time, anyone would like to come forward? Uh, Lori, have we had any um? Emails or anything online?
Nothing prior to the meeting.
Thank you. All right, staff night. Um, this is the opportunity we can do here from our staff and get updates. So first up is Robin, please.
Your nameplate was the top one.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, I was pleased to be able to present a fiscal year retrospective in your packet and I've got some exciting numbers on there. We, our visits to the library went up about a third from last year. Um, lots of activity in the library and we uh, we are also, we were the most used library system in the state. That we used to deal with the most used libraries in some of the states. So very exciting. We're gearing up for um, I'd say this week and next week, the peak of our summer reading activity. We have a puppet show on Wednesday during the TMA's. Um, and then next week is our spin and win. So uh, these will be um, so be the peak of the summer reading and then we'll start getting ready for back to school. Um, any questions about my report?
Thank you. Very laid out very nicely, very, very well, pretty easy to read. And impressed with the numbers. So whatever you're doing, you're doing it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Fendel.
Um, yeah, I uh, I like how your report has definitely evolved and uh, it's really great. I love to see your numbers. I'm more excited, I think, though, just knowing um, the programming that we continue to provide for our community and for the outlaying community is pretty remarkable. Um, I know I was at the convention meeting last Wednesday and unfortunately did not complete the uh, letters from home, but I heard that you had a very, very good uh.
Yeah, it was packed. We almost ran out of chairs. But you have one more chance because we have the final presentation, uh, Letters From Home India next month.
Very nice. Um, any specific takeaways or anything that you'd like to share from that last week?
Um, lots of personal stories uh, from Hannah who was our speaker, who's from town of Kenya. Um, uh, we got to have some food that's common in Kenya and uh, she had a really well-prepared blind show. You can share more if you provide um, maybe some information.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Robin?
Uh, what, 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 yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Robin, so with this continued growth, what the, what, uh, if that jumped another thirty percent, is that you're gonna, is that workable or is that?
Well.
I'm just curious, you know, if that, if that continues, uh, it, it's a good thing.
It, it is. Uh, you can already see a little bit of the impact of as we transitioned back to in-person programming. You know, we really couldn't accommodate the amount of attendee that we could when we had programs online. Um, and the demand for online, though, wasn't there so much as people are able to go back to all their school and activities in person. So you can see that our youth and teen program attendance did drop and part of the reason is um, you know, we don't have room for big big groups in the library, you know?
Yeah.
And it's, we're also needing to fully stack the building because of the visitors. So, yeah, there is an impact with um, having more space could uh, certainly help us grow.
With your new board, um, with the new library board on, um, and then the friends of library, um, how's that all working?
Really wonderful. We're in a great spot right now. Our full board of seven members, um, and very engaged. And then our new friends leadership, uh, they, they're planning um, a wonderful early festival book sale. They were able to shadow Hillsborough's book sale, their friends, and they're borrowing some movable shelves and things that will, I'll just be on tables this summer. Uh, and then they just have a, they have several club committees, lots and lots of engaged volunteers, let's say, you know, uh, fifteen or so people regularly volunteering each week for various things.
All right.
Great.
Um, so Pathan, do you have any comments for Robin?
No.
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, everyone. All right, I'm going to start with Chief Passon.
So for uh, June, uh, we had twenty-nine calls for service reception. Uh, trend is still continuing and uh, public demand is uh, a little bit lower than the average, but not by a ton. So it's still kind of that means and then uh, our sub initiative is still pretty high. The biggest thing that we really dealt with was we kind of put our uh, new camping ordinance to the test a little bit. And it got its first uh, first example there where we had a boat camp near by the bathroom park. So we're hoping to get that removed very peacefully and work pretty pretty efficiently to get that uh, that moved. So uh, so that's working well and uh, I think they moved on. So um, so that's good for the city. Um, this was our quarterly uh, staff thing. The difference is, is I forgot to add the quarterly staff. I hope that's in the next report. But looking at the status of the quarter, the time of days are still uh, right where we have our public service. That's where the, the bathroom, who the calls are. Um, but as you look in, you will be able to see it, but I can tell you, as I pulled the numbers uh, for the quarterly, it's were right uh, right on par with everything we've done for both uh, reports. Uh, and public, pretty much public demand, although uh, in two thousand twenty, uh, without the COVID year, two hundred and seven was a public demand calls uh, that we had there and we were at two hundred and eleven. So uh, each month I've been saying, oh, we're kind of a little bit low. That, that's for public demand calls and that's playing out, but it's not massively low, uh, because in, in twenty-two, we had two thirty-sevens the last year. Um, so we're still riding that beans. Obviously, our self-initiated is uh, through this quarter and really for, for several months has been through the roof a lot. So that's that's a stand. That's kind of where it's blown off. But I guess I'll, I'll get that to you in the next staff report. Uh, so you'll be able to look at that as well. Uh, you also got in your report, uh, the heat map. So it kind of shows uh, which plans would have been for the last six months. That's not a quarter, that's the six months, every, every six months. So you can kind of see where we've got our crash and stuff. And realistically, uh, what that really shows is we don't have a lot, realistically, in six months. We're not we're not crime heavy or crash heavy in any way, shape, or form. We're not really shows what that is. So um, and lastly, but but not least, you can see, uh, we talked about it, that our overtime has stopped and, and I wanted to mention, we count, we, we showed that the thirteen hours, we did already talk about it in the last half report, but those are the thirteen hours that we did and what the, what we did in those thirteen hours. Uh, but again, that will be the last time you see that since that will fall off and we're not doing it at all for uh, for July. Other than that, uh, do you have any questions?
I only had one question and that was in regards to the uh, the GOA area and the properties there. Have they been pretty secure? I'm assuming you patrol those regularly for uh, you know, either somebody breaking in trying to, because I, I know we had some problems in the past. Is, is that just an ongoing thing or?
Yeah, I think uh, so there's been a couple of times where some of those have been broken into or uh, we haven't caught anybody in them and it seems to be the same property. Um, I don't know yet, sometimes the middle one, the one that I've been pushing is hitting the most. Uh, I can tell you the public works did an outstanding job this last time of securing it. Uh, it was a very interesting way to secure. Uh, you have to see it, but there's like no access to like, there's nothing to be taken or anything. So I mean, it's, it's fantastic. Uh, and it's like Florida, it's one of those twelve-foot pieces of plywood. So uh, you can't even get to the doors. They did a great job and I was good. Uh, you're right, we do patrol that and see it. Um, there's really no access. So I hope that continues to be the case.
Any other questions or two? Comments? Council Pathan?
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, I had a quick one, just because Chief and I didn't really have any chance to catch up today, but did, did barters or any of our deputies or any west end, in and out, did they have to assist over banks over the weekend with evacuations and the buyer issue there that you know of?
Yeah, I'm not too much. Someone said something about banks over the weekend? I, I don't know anything about it. I don't know about specifically anybody.
Okay, I knew the sheriff's office had this, TVF and R and Sheriff's Office did this a bit, probably with evacuations, but it's probably just other deputies being pulled. So, okay.
I guess the last alibi that I had is, I don't know if you know this, National Outlaw is coming up, August. I gotta keep talking about it. Uh, for that, go and start. We've got the, everyone riled up to, to attend there. So that should be your estimation again, between six a.m. Uh, and then there's another little fest, I'm trying to think of what it's called, what you have going on in August. I mean, the garlic festival, that's, that's coming up and, and we've got the parade lined up. So we should have a preview turnout for the sheriff's office. Both in the parade and, and the national. It should be, in August third, it should be a Thursday, six a.m.
Very. Comments or questions?
Last, last, last alibi, I have a special request. Uh, I think I've been doing stuff on social media, but Radar and Sergeant O'Reilly, who's pretty much an inter, uh, pretty much an international star on uh, he feeds his dog, and I Cameron, everyone loves it.
He's a worldwide star on Instagram.
Sergeant O'Reilly and his dog Radar.
Washington County Sergeant and his canine.
I've been telling him that I'm asking people to bring food to feed his dog to see what happens. But I'm joking, but not a whole point. But you should look it up.
I'll show you guys that meeting.
He's got uh, quite a following and it's exploding ever since he fed his dog Chick-fil-A, as my understanding. So. Big deal.
This weekend it was Hannah ready with.
There you go.
I suppose it's not just dog food.
Oh, no.
He will be nationally out. So uh, but funny, uh, anecdotal story. Uh, Lori asked, well, you know, we all took one hour dog here, obviously. Uh, and Lori came up and asked me for a special request because she caught me in the office and asked if I knew the cannon deputies. Weird, I, I kind of do for the most part. Uh, and so she showed me the videos of it, which I just happened to have seen literally like two nights before. My wife was set up with someone that, that showed her some of those. She came out in the parking lot of the boggy and it was really like international. And Radar, she didn't care about Sergeant O'Reilly, she cared about Radar. Uh, and then she's like, I guess Sergeant O'Reilly could be there as well. Uh, so uh, it's turned out that through that day, um, he told me he didn't want to be there. So uh, we're going to get him before banks. I think banks wants him for their, their barbecue festival as well. So he's, he is quite the, the sheriff's office commodity.
He's a star.
He's a star.
Great. I can't wait to see this.
Well, again, it helps to watch the videos prior to, so you kind of have an idea. Lori, you?
I'll show him after the meeting.
I got ready to just talk, so I'm going to have to work with that.
It's on Instagram. It's on Instagram. I don't do TikTok.
I guess that's the last, last alibi. I gotta.
Quick, Chief, I mean that the two thirty-six is self-initiated? You're gonna bust one fifty-five on the year prior. Is it more people or are the people driving a little more haphazardly or what do you think? Self-initiated? Because you guys are out there doing your job.
But yeah, so what do you think? Well, a lot, a lot of what this is, is so if you look at the traffic stops, the traffic stops uh, in Oakland, what the government is doing is traffic.
Yeah, okay.
The traffic stops aren't necessarily high. Obviously, they're not. But if you look at the numbers, however, what that means is a lot of self-initiated is, is definitely actually putting out the work that they're actually doing. In other words, if they're doing uh, subject stops or doing extra patrols or doing things at different locations, that's what they're actually they're documenting what they're actually doing as opposed to having.
Oh, so it's not all traffic. It's not all traffic stop. Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of that. For instance, uh, this happens a bunch and it's happening more. I, I told you before, the more we run radar, the more we do traffic enforcement, the fewer stops you're going to see. That's the way it works, right? Because everyone knows oh, we, I mean, how many times you had to hit a cop, they're going to be on the way down. They should actually drive the speed limit, right? Or on West Union or wherever it is that we're doing. So that's the weird thing with police work. The more we enforce it, the less we actually do, if that makes sense. It's just, that's the way it works. So um.
You need that dog over here. You need that dog over here.
So, so one of the things that we're doing is, is to help capture where we're running that. Is I'm having the deputies put yourself on a detail on north. So we can see how many times and what will we look up, how many times where we're doing a radar at north. I know it's counterproductive, it's counterintuitive for me because I figure that's just what you do. You can run radar and move on. But um, that way, it legitimately captures where on north you're sitting and at what time here, it will pull up all those special details that you're doing in those traffic details. Uh, and a lot of times you may do that for a half hour and not pulling your cards over. So what you end up with is they're doing work as opposed to half and a half hour of being uncommitted or not doing anything. Now they're actually doing that important. And that's whether it's commercial, whether it's over the upper Iron Ridge, wherever it is, that, that detail works. So you're getting a lot of that self-initiative. The work that they've probably been doing this entire time, we're just documenting this is what we're doing. So.
For verification, they.
So that's really what that is. Again, it's super weird and the more you do traffic, the less traffic there is. Not so much the case when you're lower, but here at North Plains, there's not a ton of traffic on north. Uh, I mean, it's a one-way road. There's just not, not a ton of folks. And I can tell you the speeds, I think I've mentioned this before, the speeds that were when it first lowered twenty-five, lower north of twenty-five, they've dropped down. It's getting, uh, even though people complain about it, I understand that. It's getting harder and harder to find people to pull over at really a higher speed. Um, you're doing six, eight over. I mean, I, it's not, it's not like it was at forty or forty-five or fifty. It's the more we're sitting, the lower that speed is coming. Same with on commercial, when you said on, on commercial. Um, people are, I mean, it's like even where it gets out that, that we're actually doing it.
Because meanwhile, if we want to do that too, that was always forty, you know, we're used to it.
Well, we always had, I, I, I think, well, it wasn't good one. Gasket was always the one that I can think of. Oh, there's always a car sitting on Gasket. You gotta slow down. I mean, we never, none of us should be slowing. You know, realistically, you know, the spots where they like to sit. So you make sure you're, you're going, my wife would say that whenever. Hey, this is where they like to sit and say, it's usually where they say, so you gotta get people to, you gotta be slow down, you know, make sure you're not speeding. So I think that's happening in north, or in North Plain. That's weird. Which is a good track. I think that's a good thing.
As for your presence and extreme for. Well, any other comments?
Thank you.
All right, nice to have public works. Hey, Dustin. This man is a mean friend.
Yes. I'm just very cheap. There's something called the UGV that's been taking a lot of my.
It's a little brighter so you can see it.
I made a note.
That's good.
Any?
Yeah, really is.
Um, I want you to have my report. There is no wholly want change since the, the last few times. Um, we're kind of stuck in my bosom beach projects that are coming up. Um, with like water service waiting on them and then of course, we're um, the public works facility that's underway. Um, just trying to do cost saving measures, um, having meetings about that, just to see how we can improve some things now as to what that. As far as the crew on out in the field, business is as usual, no major issues. Uh, so that's, that's uh, a good thing. Uh, the only other thing on my end is basically working with three J on projects uh, and all policies, procedures, new standards um, and uh, design details, stuff like that. There's nothing much changed in the last couple of meetings. Any questions?
Question? How, then, how long have you been waiting out for your crew from Clean Water Service for that sidewalk? I'm just curious, how long, how long has that been on the boat? Quite a while?
It's been quite a while. It's been almost since I've been here.
And how long you been here?
Uh, since the end of April.
Okay, just, just uh, just don't make any sense, but uh, go away, I want to leave you there. First sidewalk, I don't get it. Thank you.
Well, that's more than.
Yeah, I'll, I'll watch the storm and all that.
Overlay.
Yeah, plans that ever split the Clean Water Service.
Correct.
Maybe it's the most important.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I, I will say this because this started before Dustin came on. One of the, one of the small complicating factors of that project was we knew we were going to be doing sidewalk work in other areas around there. Uh, not only on three fourteenth, but Pacific Main Commercial. We tied a lot of those into that clean water permit and in hopes that it could be taken care of. We're, we're really, really close, but that has delayed three fourteenth. The good thing is we've issued the notice of intent to award to the contractor. They're still good with it while we wait for clean water, but we don't want to push it until September or something. So I got a meeting, I have lunch with three J tomorrow. I'm going to specifically ask about this question, but Dustin's right. It's we're really close. They've answered a lot of questions and we're pretty hopeful, but it's, it was all done in the hopes of efficiencies with other permits and bringing in a lot of impervious surface um, into the same permit, but sometimes it doesn't always go as smoothly.
Yeah, I feel so much better.
Thank you.
This is to be done.
Um, you know, Dustin, thanks for uh, responding to inquiries and questions about uh, North Avenue and Shady Brook and uh, Glenco. Um, you know, many of us travel that way. We live right around the corner, for example, um, and, and um, having those bushes cut back has been helpful. Um, but I'm kind of curious about what the timeline is for the county because I know it's really, it's my understanding, I think after reading Andy's report, um, uh, that it's, the striping and everything is, is really Lennar and the county, right? But residents don't see it that way, right? So I'm just hoping that maybe you could just clarify it in a way that, you know, like, maybe is there a timeline or when that might be corrected or what's happening there?
The last line I heard from Lennar was that the striping needs improvement. And so that's why those poles were still up there. I think there was some issues with uh, inbound cars coming southbound. Um, and then they, they just had to um, kind of re-stripe that area before it's finally approved. Um, and as far as the timeline, I'm, I do not have a timeline, but I can get with uh, Lennar about that and see when that's going to be happening.
I think about the garlic festival, which is right around the corner. Um, and a lot of folks come through town, thousands and thousands of of folks that come through town. And you know, I can only imagine what that might look like if it's still that way and, you know, people, you know, some folks are, have great common sense and others do not, right? And so I'm a little concerned about what that might turn out to look like if, you know, if it's still in that position, which is, you know, fine. But um, then it'd be nice to, that was sort of cleaned out and buttoned up before that. But I'll see. Anything that you can provide, any information that you can provide, I guess we'll be very grateful.
See what I can do about this information, yeah, of when that, that part of the project. There's a line with that. Arm and you're going to give certain senses like contractors out of town, that kind of thing, and they have to come back. Uh, so I'll, I'll see you um, and I'll, I'll call back and give you know, um, a better time.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Well, I just, I think it's worth following up because it's the county road. They approve the plan without looking at the full intersection of what cars might be doing, you know, with that striping alignment. So I think to the mayor's point in communicating that, like, county, you guys, you, your stamped plans were uh, not good and we'd like, appreciate speeding this up a bit, especially trying to meet the traffic influx we'll get for mid-August. So it'd be great to have it taken care of this month.
Well, I know that there were conversations about possibly looking at having a stop sign um, uh, on the corner there, Shady Brook and Morris. Um, I, I, you know, I know when we were going through TSP and there were conversations, wouldn't that be nice to be able to have a stop sign there when people are coming down off the hill, coming going south.
Going south.
Right? Um, but again, I know it's a county road, don't know what their PSP says about that.
They won't let that happen.
Based on account.
Collector. So I doubt that's, I would be really surprised
Yeah.
if they would allow that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree. Um, I'm trying to think, even with all the traffic on Glenco going into downtown Hillsborough, there are no stop signs between
Yeah.
the interchange and Main Street. So I don't, not sure. Well, until you get to the services building, there is a stoplight there, the public services building, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a stop sign in areas like that, but there's that jurisdictional kind of uh, so everybody with the county, you know, please, please excuse this kind of thing.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments, questions for Dustin? Uh, and also given.
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I just wanted to see if you knew what was the um, process with Jackson School Road. I know that's a county road. It looks like majority of it was, was paved over, but it stopped just before city limits, which I understand, but then also up to the interchange. And I was just curious uh, why the whole part wasn't paved up to the interchange. No, totally okay if you don't.
Yeah, once again, that's a county project and I don't have information on, on that. But I can probably, you know, look into my county contacts and see what they know.
No problem at all. Thank you.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Uh, the first is in relation to any, any of the, I know Andy mentioned this maybe earlier, but uh, any of the cost, the cost issues we're seeing with the public works facility and what and, and if we're addressing something, what, what are, what are we, what, what factors we're at in the building are we looking at to address cost concerns or maybe overruns that are running into the project? Is it materials? Is it design? Um, what might, what does that look like?
It's a little mixture of everything, but I think we can move some materials to different materials. We can kind of cost significantly. It's a little mixture of, of everything, but I think we can move some materials to different materials. We can kind of cost significantly. And I think that was, uh, the last meeting that we had, um, is rebounds savings, uh, and just by association with those.
Okay. Yeah, I just wondered if we're looking at giving up anything major because really it should be a fairly competitive element. Element out there right now, at least, uh. From the aspects that I see and projects that I do, but, uh, it's only a small part of that entire facility. I'm just interested in if, you know, you're running up against, uh, some aspect of that that's. Giving you a high percentage of extra costs that you didn't anticipate or that the architect didn't anticipate in the. Materials itself.
Dustin, I'm happy to take this one off because I did a couple. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, uh, that, you know, Andy's been working on this a lot longer than I have, um. Uh, but I think there are some issues of the project that, you know, we're looking at the future. And if we leave out some of these elements in the project, um, then they'll actually be more expensive in the future. So it's, it's better to go ahead and build out right now. We're trying to work with, um, what we can do or some things that we've cut out. Um, that, you know, we can probably rebuild in the future, but other things, it's like, you have to build it now, otherwise it's gonna be much more expensive. Um, you know, five, ten years down the road.
Yeah, I just, to that point, because we had a couple of budget meetings last week on them. And so we've been at the value engineering stage and. I think to your point, yes, materials is a lot of it. Basically every, every, the cost of every commodity that goes into a building has gone up. Except for maybe timber and Bill shared some of those cost indices, indexes with me today, a text message of all things at eleven AM. Cool, cool, cool beans. Um, but that's a lot of, that's a lot of the issue. The other though is architectural and design. Um, uh, elements that we intentionally chose. So the programmatic. So for instance, we've been debating, well, as part of this, do we put a flat roof here? That'll save forty K or something like that. Okay, but what does, what does that do? How does that cascade down the road? Um, do we cut out one of the, we've got four bay doors. Do we cut one of those out right now? That'll save us eighty K or something. Well, does that, I mean, it's kind of these short-term gain things and you pile up a lot of those and you end up. Half a million dollars over your target budget.
Right, so it's at five point eight or six point four?
Well, we're closer to, no, 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 we were, our, our food budget was six point eight. Our food budget in this, in the budget was six point eight. We're trying to get to seven point one right now, seven point. A lot of that was, was the second floor decision. It's, it's more costly than we originally anticipated, but that's a second floor. That'll be really nice to have in the future. So, um, we actually have a, a, a meeting tomorrow to, to kind of talk about some of these elements. Kind of some of our last ditch VE or value of engineering decisions. And then what can we, what can we do? Um, how can we make that, um, a reality? Um, so, I mean, I've talked to Bill about contingencies, reserves and some of these things. So we'll kind of dive into that tomorrow and let you know.
Okay, I just wanted to know if anything was at risk or, you know, I don't want to see a wholesale change. I mean, certainly we're looking at. Alternative materials, that makes sense.
Right.
But it's, it's also gotta make, we gotta be thinking about that building's gonna be around for sixty or seventy years.
Yeah, yeah, we have a covered storage area. We don't do that now, two of these things. That'll save us about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay. We'll do that in a year, no problem. So we're really picking some of those things that are pretty easy to determine. Um, I'm, I'm gonna write a grant with FEMA that'll. Hopefully get us about three or four hundred thousand for a generator to cover that cost. So there are certain things we're doing, but we're still gonna have a delta. And we'll either have to get really creative or we may come back to the council for further reauthorization sometime in the, within the next year or something. But it's all about. Doing it now rather than doing it five years from now, when it'll probably be three times the price, if it makes sense programmatically to do it. But we'll, we're still going through those decisions.
Okay, that's what I was after. Thank you. Nothing further from me.
Um, can you answer a community development, um, question on the land use applications or do you want me to move this over Andy or something? It's about, I was just curious about what the minor modification to Richard's Ridge is all about.
I don't have any information.
Okay, oh, that's good. Thanks. All right. Thank you, Dustin. Okay. Um, Bill, you're up. Oh, yeah, community development report, the land use applications, uh, any questions there?
Do you want me to take that one that you had?
You can take this now or during your.
Yeah. Well, kind of in the realm of, of Dustin and a little bit community development, we're going to, we're working through a kind of a website remodel. And as part of that, we are opting to add some features in there that, um, will have sort of a resident request module to met, help us better track. And have some feedback on when people just randomly email us all the time or call in with sort of these things. We'll try to direct that into a database that'll show the customer service requests. Um, and a lot of that. Will kind of segment it through, um, uh, those requests and then we'll have something similar with, uh, code. Code complaints, code violations too. We'll basically just tear apart our code where the nuisance and abatement section is. And kind of people can file a request in there, because those are two things that we've been struggling with and, and especially it's been a good opportunity since Dustin came in as the new guy. And it's like, how do you guys do this? That it's, it's been a, something we've been struggling with for years and he's kicked us into solving that. Spending more money. So thanks, Dustin. Uh, but, um, yeah, uh, Madam Mayor, that, this was something that I alluded to on Friday in that report. And, um, Richard's Ridge was approved, um, in their land use application a few years back for one building, uh, doing the one building on that site. And leaving the rest of the site with, here's what we may do in the future, but they don't have, they didn't have the approval for the next couple of buildings. So in the interim, he came in and said, well, I might be years away from having the cash flow to do that second or third building. Can I do food carts here for a while? And we said, yes, it's gonna, gonna take a minor modification to your entire, your entire, um, site plan though, to do that. So, um, he, he could still come back in anytime and get the land use approval for a, a second building, a third building. But I think instead of him doing that, maybe waiting on cash flow and then paying a renewal fee for two thousand dollars or whatever each time. He's gonna get a little cash flow from the food carts, which is, um, it's several businesses do that these days. You can kind of sit on something, develop a pad. Get some cash out of that for two years and then go back into your next piece. So that's what he's planning to do. So he's got some steps to fulfill before he can get our approval to do that, but that's, that's going to be, and I think. I, I don't, I, I haven't seen his application when he originally approached us about it. He was thinking for food carts there, but I don't, I don't have the exact details, but that's what that is.
Any other comments about the land use staff?
Okay, okay.
Um, moving on to finance, um, Bill.
Thank you, Mary. Um. We've all, I'm sure, had an opportunity to look at the report, but, um, since this is activity through, uh, the report. Um, summarizes financial activity for the city through June thirtieth. It's basically effectively a, uh. End of biennial preliminary first, um, report about the full biennial in terms of, um, operating funds as well. As well as capital funds. And with the caveat, of course, was that by June thirtieth, we, we, um. The third, July one begins the thirteenth month of the, of the fiscal year. And so there's things that will roll in, most notably the last invoice. Um, from the Washington County Sheriff's Office, uh, but other things, you know, kind of roll into, um, we have until, we have until actually August thirtieth. Um, for, uh, any fiscal current or fiscal year, we just ended expenditures to come in. So that's why we say very much this is preliminary. Um, but as far as all the operating funds, general fund, street fund and the water fund. Um, overall, all of them are, um, should, should be fully complete for the biennial, uh, coming in under, um, budget. Um, expenses relative to, um, revenues. Uh, expenses budgeted versus expenses, expenses realized, uh, over the last couple of years. And again, the report now as of last month, we've started all the numbers you see, all the barge records you see, that's for the full biennial. We had been reporting annually. Um, but after a while, it, it's, it kind of got this weird, weird thing, when really it's a biennial period we're talking about. Um, so anyway, uh, general funds, streets fund and water fund expenditures, um, overall for those funds. Um, we don't expect any expenses to, any expenditures, expenses to come in that are going to change that in terms of, um, actual. Um, going above, um, what was budgeted, we, we should be coming in under budget. Um, the general fund itself, um, by the end, you know, once the year's closed out sometime, um, next month. We really won't only have, likely only have one department, um, be, uh, have expenditures kind of above. And that's likely going to be, community development will likely be a little bit above, um, budget expenditure. But since the other departments really, um, are coming, have, should come in below, um, as things trickle in still. Overall, the general fund is coming in below budget. Um, the general government, general government department, um, there's still, as part of closing out the year. There's an insurance expenditure of around fifty thousand dollars, a little more, um, that looks like it's misattributed. So as we go through and check for errors and do journal entries to kind of move things around for errors identified, errors of attribution identified. Right now, it looks like general government is over budget, but it should come in also, uh, under. Um, streets fund is doing just fine. The water fund. Um, revenues are not coming in dramatically higher than budgeted or, or projected, but the warm weather this spring definitely. Well, May, June definitely helped, um, with buying how the biennial ended on revenues. Um, so, but as far as expenditures overall, the water fund, um, expenditures will come in under budget. We over budget in terms of expected capital expenditure on the reservoir that project ended before, or we budgeted for expenditures to go. Um, longer, further than, uh, what actually happened. So, um, there's a large amount of capital expenditures budgeted that didn't occur and that's why it was just sort of a, a project timing thing rather than. We didn't, um, finish the project or anything. So the, 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 the operating funds are looking to end the biennial. Um, in really good shape, basically. Um, the, the water fund itself, account status reports. Um, we had a very good June in terms of water, water payments. Um, we reported in May that overdue water payments, uh, things would. Things kind of started aging a lot, different accounts, uh, had overdue balances. Well, that greatly reversed in June. Um, the major institutional customer, um, paid down their balance. That was the big, overwhelmingly the biggest part of it. But we had a number of residential accounts and, and business accounts that had just kind of crept over, missed payment. I don't know what happened. Um, most of that was paid down. So by the end of June, uh, we're really only looking at a little over nine hundred dollars in total combined overdue balances. In the water utility, which is about the lowest it's been probably since before two thousand twenty twenty. Um, so June was a very good month. Let's see, you saw that. As far as capital funds, um, you, you can kind of see in different reports, most of the funds. Many of the projects that, you know, that you all approved in the twenty-one, twenty-three budget have been done or have great progress on. Um, the big story of the capital funds, kind of like it's mentioned in the report, Burn Hills Build Out is brought in. Um, we have million dollars in TDT revenue and then very sizable revenue in different SDCs. And they've been meeting with us regarding some credits calculated and legitimate against those. Uh, payments for different improvements they've put in. So we've been, and we'll be having a meeting with them next Monday about the TDT very specifically. So, um, that process is working. Urban renewal brought in, um, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars this year. I think it was a total of almost one, one and a half million over the last couple of years. That was really close to budget, um, what we projected, not quite, but very close. Just amazes done. That's reflected in the bricks capital fund. Yeah, I, projects have kind of been about as active as planned and budgeted during the year. So, um, it's been pretty easy to track overall. Um, so I hope that's good progress there. Um, and then other things going on, um, you, I think we got a letter that confirms that the FY twenty-one audit was received. So we're back in regular status regarding shared revenues from the state. Um, Wednesday we meet with our audit prep, new audit prep consultant that's going to help us. Take care of a lot of things. We had a previous financial consultant kind of helped that just did things for us. And that's good when we needed in a pinch, but we have somebody now we're gonna kind of work with beginning Wednesday. To kind of help us stand on our own two feet regarding a lot more things, including audit prep and audit performance with the auditors. Instead of relying on somebody externally to do everything for us. And that just left us open to a lot of gaps where when we did lose our previous consultant. You know, it's been a, it's, it, you know, it's been a challenge, um, doing things and kind of getting up, getting things up to speed and, 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 you know, progress. So that'll change, uh, that process. We've been working on getting that process changed. Um, the fuel tax, local fuel tax, um, will come in under projections, of course, with a biennial. But it is worth noting that the former Shell station, um, July revenue, uh, excuse me, revenue in June, the month of June was seventy. I did a double take and double checked it. The rev, the fuel tax revenue we got from the former Shell station this June. Was seventy per, seventy-seven percent higher than the July, July of twenty twenty-two. So lower gas prices, perhaps, perhaps better marketing and maybe even the Taco Bell. Have come on, you know, pulling people off the freeway have all combined. I mean, gas tax revenues are also up over at the Chevron, but.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, Chevron's up thirty. So it's a combination of factors, economic recovery. I do think Taco Bell is pulling people off the freeway. And a few of them here and there are filling up with gas that wouldn't ordinarily before. Um, but I think, I think the former Shell station's just running business better, frankly. Um, I really think that's the big part of it. So that's been a great improvement. Um, anything else? Nothing gigantic in terms of notable, I guess I would say. So if you have any questions or comments, um, that'd be great to hear from you.
Okay, then we'll start with you.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
No questions? Thank you, Bill.
I do.
Right. Um, looks like I don't mind who's new business, um, in the report there. Out of ten unfinished business. And we'll elaborate in two months and then we'll see you have the report.
Madam Mayor, I hope you don't want to dive too deep. Um, I don't have a lot to elaborate on, uh, considering we missed the first meeting in July. I had. Four weeks of kind of updates to throw in here for the public to, to review and catch up on. Um. So no, uh, planning for a couple more festivals that'll, then the, the summer will be over. School will be back in session. I, for one, am very much looking forward to that. Um, although like, I like school, but yes, um, I will be out in North Plains next Thursday, Friday. But still reachable by, for an email and everything, but, um, yeah, that'll be, uh.
No, your, your reports are pretty comprehensive and then for your, your brain size, it's always, um, pretty thorough as well. And it's interesting, it sounds like that, um, most parents start to talk about school returning.
In our house at least, it's, some stability is good in our house. I mean, I, I loved summer when I was a kid. Now that I'm adult, I'm like, uh. When are they going back to school? So.
Question?
If I may, yeah, you went with this, uh, let's see here, Commissioner Tree. So, uh, Mr. Wada, dinner, what, what is doing? Just the conversation or what's going on?
Oh, yeah, we have, uh, thanks, Councilor Kendall. Um, it's for, for one, part of it is just touching base with. The various county commissioners on things that are going on in North Plains, and specifically when we have an urban growth boundary amendment. It has to go to the Board of, uh, County Commissioners for their ultimate approval too. It's just kind of catching them up on our process. Yes, she came out here. Okay. Yeah, no, we offered to, we've offered to meet any of them anywhere, just because they're busy people, but they've all come to North Plains and chatted with them. So. Yeah. Yep, and, um, Senator Weber, our, our senator in the state in Salem, we're gonna have a meeting with her, um. Is it next Monday? Here, within the next week or two. We gotta kind of catch her up on things too, after the session. Yeah.
I noticed, uh, well, have you IT?
That was one of my questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, maybe if you could elaborate a little bit more, um, did get an email, um, this afternoon about five o'clock. With some, uh, updates and mitigation things that are being planned. Do you talk to them a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we searched around for a few different vendors, we'd gotten to the point where. When I came in, City of Hillsborough was providing some of our I T services, that lasted for about a year. And then in twenty nineteen, we moved to a new vendor towards the end of, kind of halfway towards, and then towards the end of twenty nineteen. And one of the big goals there was to move a lot of our network and server operations to the cloud. Um, which was great timing, because about two months later, nobody was in the office again, so that was good timing. But that, that's around the time we went to G Suite Products and Google, um. And that worked okay, our I, I T vendor there, um, he helped us in a pinch, but we've just, we've, we've gotten more staff, we, we have more needs. We need to start treating I T like some of these other services, like finance department, like an internal service fund, I T helps all departments. Um, there are things we need to do with cybersecurity and all, all these things are just, you know, there's a lot of phishing scams and all those things out there. I just wanted to, want us to be more, um. You know, reduce any of that liability and just make sure all our employees have those needs that, that, that we deserve. So, talked to a few different vendors, including a couple of different cities even, um, and then ultimately this group, uh, Genuine Technology Group out of. Uh, Hillsborough is who we went with, um, it's a reasonably priced and, but we're gonna go with the plan that gives, um. Every employee, um, a good level of service, um, it's basically an all-inclusive, uh, you know. Server, hardware, soft, not, not hardware-like, uh, machines, but, um, all of the server components, all of the software, Microsoft, all those things. Um, it'll go, get us all on. Uh, where we need to be, we've been getting to our earlier discussion from the work session, you know, we have a new employee comes on and we have. Part of our rare volunteer hard, helping them to onboard some of our I R T, I T needs, because we're bootstrapping some things, well, um. Those days are over, so it'll be a lot more, um, professional and, um. So that's something I've been wanting to do for a while and we kind of finally, finally made that happen, then this year, this fiscal year. Um, so you will see some emails from them, some changes on, on your side, on the council side. Not much should change, because we're gonna keep the same email addresses, we are going exclusively to Microsoft three sixty-five and those products. Um, right now in City Hall, um, I have a lot of virtual meetings, I can't use Teams, which is what the county uses in the state. It's diff, I have to do it on my phone, my computer won't do it, so we're gonna move exclusively to those products and that'll kind of resolve it when they're. And they're working on all those, on, on all those issues. Um, but we'll still be very cloud-based and we'll have an ultimate goal of eliminating our server completely and doing, um, things to the cloud. The server can just be, um, backed up at their, uh, backed up in their offices. But, yeah, it should be good, and, and if you got that email, I got it around the same time, we'll just do a changeover probably over one of these weekends. Whenever they're prepared to do the, the full migration.
Any other questions?
No, I think that. Questions.
Okay, then, questions for Andy?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Any council reports? By the time of the planning convention meeting, um, last Wednesday. And, um, I think Andy, uh, mentioned that, uh, what. In your Friday vibe, I think you did, right there. Um, just about the planning convention approving the line along, which you could have raised on that book. And then they cleared vision, and so, um, those need to come into council for, um, adoption in August. Um. Council Kendall, you're at the library this week?
Yeah, next Tuesday.
Yeah.
It's been a real slight change.
Oh, okay, great.
For you, Robin, it's all been, they go.
Okay. All right. Um. You're. All right, so now at this point, um, if there's nothing else, uh, council, maybe, that you need to share with us. From a council report standpoint? No, okay. Um, all right, so now, um, next, um, on, on our agenda is an executive session. And, um, at this time, um, have Lori go ahead, have some of the Lori, so she can read and be square.
Thank you, Mayor. North Plain City Council will now enter into an executive session under O R S one ninety-two dot six six zero parentheses two parentheses F. It consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, uh. Also under O R S one ninety dot six six zero parentheses two parentheses G. To consider preliminary negotiations involving matters of trade or commerce. In which the governing bodies in competition with governing bodies in other states or nations. And under O R S one ninety-two dot six six zero parentheses two parentheses H.
Yeah.
To consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Only news media representatives and staff designated by the city council are permitted to attend the executive session. News media representatives, staff and council members are respectfully directed not to report on any of the discussions. That occurred during the session, except to state the general subject as previously announced. The council will return to regular session if there is a need for action on the executive session item. No final action or decision may be taken in the executive session. Any materials distributed will be collected by the city recorder at the end of the executive session.
Thank you, Lauren, so, um, at the time, um, we have a couple of books online. Uh, we'll thank you, uh, for attending our state council meeting, that at this time, we're not gonna ask you to, uh, sign off.
Thanks, Katie. Yep, Doug, I am going to sign you off, I'm gonna kick you out, sorry, we will catch you tomorrow though.
Bye, Dad.
No, he didn't do anything wrong, don't report him. Okay, and then I'm gonna stop the recording.